Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Ms. Muske?
Here.
And it appears Mr. Roberts and Mr. Cox are absent.
Mr. Rizzo's here, so I guess we'll wait. I believe, Mr. Roberts, we knew.
Right.
He was, Mr. Cox, do we know?
He's right here.
No, oh, he is coming in now.
All right.
Okay, so he is here.
Meeting minutes, meeting minutes, which make sure, uh, May ones, I was here, Mr. Roberts, Ms. Muske, Mr. Cox is absent, so that's, so the three of us could pass these unless someone has, is there any comments on the May meeting minutes?
I did not.
Uh, who want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to be approved, the May, planning, the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, planning commission meeting, yes, submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then, second would be the, uh, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes, and it's like we're all with that one.
Yeah.
Anybody have any comments on those?
No, I'd move we approve as submitted.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Uh, the first item, Mr. Rizzo, come on up. Okay, I already get his. She's one of the guys.
I don't care yet.
So, second time you've been here, um, you submitted some additional information. Mr. Francis, maybe, just allow you my other comments, I can, uh, Mr. Francis, would you like to go over your comments on the, uh?
I, I, there were no additional.
Oh, was there no new?
I don't believe there was any additional information.
Oh, I'm sorry. Those are comments for the nineteen forty-two.
Sorry. Valid you wrote.
There was no addition, there was no new comments. Mr. Rizzo's, is that correct?
Yeah.
There was no additional information.
No, no, no information. Okay, so you, had you, John, did you have to go to BZA?
Yeah, I had to.
Okay. So I guess, uh, Mr. Francis, do you happen to recall what things you were looking for? Or I could probably find comments from last time, now knowing that these passed.
Yeah, no, I can, I can look at it, see if I could find.
On the secondary, or you're, was it the same? May, uh, catch me? No, zoning was April.
Do you recall, how many acres do you have?
They were May, it's under two.
Under two?
Yeah.
I had the report, I'll look at your.
Isn't there some rule about a, a, an oversized garage on the side yard, less than three acres, you gotta?
Yeah.
You, you, you're, I think that's what I read, something about, uh, you didn't have the right size, or something.
I, I'm not sure.
I thought I read that somewhere.
Yeah, so it looks like we had the, the site plan to show the, the setback, which it looked like you had plenty of space, but we just needed a document on a site plan. And then the BZA, which sounds like you went to the board zoning appeals.
Oh.
And then, um, likely, again, not a problem, but the maximum ground coverage for all accessory buildings, um, can't exceed ten percent of the rear yard, uh, so you just needed to show that you met the lot coverage requirement.
Right, I saw it, I didn't close.
Good, and then, um, you had the building height, which the building commissioner can confirm. And, yeah, then there was the issue about side yard versus rear yard, and I, I believe the zoning administrator, um, determined that it met the code.
Yes.
And that, that appears, that's it, so they would, he would need his conditional zoning certificate at this point.
Okay. With, uh, no, they passed BZA.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that you went to BZA.
Yeah.
I, I remember, okay.
It sounds like, there might be a couple things maybe to submit to building, just so they can fully, uh, document, uh, the area coverage, I think you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would think that would be good to verify, was there anything else that needs to be verified?
I think that's it. Yeah, there were just a couple things for building.
So this is conditional zo, uh, this conditional zoning certificate, is that what you said?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move we approve as, as submitted and, uh... Yeah, including, including the additional documentation.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, besides conditional zoning, there's nothing else that needs to be approved, uh, subject to that?
All right.
They can re-verify that, and then start repairing the permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to throw that in.
All right, uh, next, uh, is the garage of nine oh four two Valley View Road.
Yes, thank you.
Either spot. First time doing it, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Mr. Maxum?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Just give us a, just a brief overview of what, of what you're planning.
Uh, planning, storage building, garage, I think, I think there's some buildings, that's pretty commercial. Um, I've been renting for many years, I'm an ad and car collector, and just looking for somewhere to bring my stuff home. I, don't know if you, anybody want to sell their cars first?
No.
Yeah, that's what I do, I help with that, and charity and all that, so, um, I have quite a few classic cars, I just want to bring them home and quit paying rent, because they're sold, my building is the biggest thing, so. I said the next time, I'm not paying anywhere else, I'd like to just build that home if I could. So, I don't know, I don't know if you guys are aware, when the property was purchased, there was two buildings up there, that total thirty-one hundred square foot, and I'm just looking for pretty much one building there that's similar. Uh, I can get rid of anything else you guys need me to get rid of, because I know the language says something about more than two outbuildings. There's just a tool shed there, my shelves in it, and the other building that's up was a milk shed, because the property used to be a cow barn. So, that's building that's still up, it's a brick building, is where they used to store all the milk, and where I'm looking to put the building is exactly where the cow barn used to be, so, just took that, just a little bit bigger. Yeah, cow barn used to be thirty-four by seventy, and then there was a metal building over here that was the horse barn, the city made me take that down when I first bought the property, and this was, uh, I helped my grandfather remove that, this and the silo that was there. But we just kind of look to replace what was there, and I'll get rid of whatever we need to do to do that.
All right, uh, Mr. Francis, would you like to go over your comments?
Sure, um, my report stated July twelfth, so the applicant is proposing a forty by eighty, about thirty-two hundred square foot detached garage on the property, nine oh four two Valley View Road. The property is larger, it's about almost five and a half acres, zoned, R one Residence District. Taking a look at aerial photography, um, there's a collection of stuff on the property, so I'm assuming.
Not as much anymore.
Okay.
Been mad, mad crazy getting rid of everything.
Good, yeah, um, so I assume this was part of maybe an enforcement issue with the building, through code enforcement?
Nope, I just decided that, I knew I was gonna have to clean up, that's why my wife calls it the pigsty, because I was cleaning up. Start building building, and I started a little bit ahead of time, but it's gotten, it's been progressively cleaned, I've been cleaning more and more lately, so.
Get, get back.
By the time that this is approved, there will be nothing there.
Oh, good, yeah, we like your wife, she's, she's on the right track. Yeah, so I mean, I think that's a separate issue from this discussion, but, um, one that probably makes the building commissioner very happy, because it's, you know, it's a zoning enforcement issue, just, just needs to be cleaned up. Um, so, with regard to the structure itself, um, in the R one Residence District section, eleven sixty-three point oh two H and I kind of regulate larger structures, and, um, how the code reads is, it provides under eleven sixty-three oh two H, regulations for accessory buildings, and you're limited to one detached private garage with a maximum area not to exceed six hundred square feet, and then you can have a second one that can't exceed two hundred eighty-eight square feet. It sounds like you have a couple structures already on the property?
Yeah, there's, there's one barn there that used to be a grain barn, it's funny because it still has, when Macedonia, I guess, used to be Hudson.
Hmm.
It still has tags in there from the, from the guy that came around and looked at, you know, if, what your wheat and your corn and everything was, his signature on it, like Seneca wheat and everything, and it said the city of Hudson, so.
Huh.
It's been there that long.
Um, so, it, it sounds like you're, you have an existing building, you have a second building that exceeds the limitations of the code. Um, so, Mr. Monaco and I talked about it, he believes there might be a variance for that second building, so that would be something he'd look at, you know, administratively. Um, if there isn't, they would have to, the applicant would have to go get a variance for that second building. The first one, um, exceeding six hundred square feet is something that the planning commission can grant under, um, eleven sixty-three oh two I, which provides provisions for larger lots. In this case, this property is definitely larger, and so the commission can grant a larger structure. In this instance, from the six hundred square feet, um, to the request of thirty-two hundred square feet, the other structure or structures would either have to be cured with a variance or removed.
Or removed, that's not about.
So, yeah, so there you go, that, that makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
And then, a couple just sort of performance things, um, which I don't think is an issue, but the code states that you, you can't exceed the maximum ground coverage of ten percent. You have a big property, so it's probably fine.
A little over five and a half, eight percent.
Yeah, so, all it is, is providing a calculation to the building department that shows how much you have square footage of detached buildings, sounds like you're gonna eliminate some of them anyhow.
Yeah.
Um, so you would be, it would be acceptable then, under the code, I, I think it's not an issue. Um, then the architectural plans, looks like they propose a twelve-foot tall building wall, is that correct?
Yes.
So that complies with the fifteen feet, it's the maximum by the code, so that's good. Roof pitch looks like it's fine, you're proposing a three twelve roof pitch, which is what the code, um, states that you can't have a slope less than three twelve, so you're good there.
Okay.
Um, so, in the rear yard, on lots greater than one acre, uh, the applicant complies with that, and then, um, the setback is not applicable in this instance because of the lot size, so if there's existing variance, or the applicant stated the building to be removed, I would suggest at this point the conditional permit can be approved, subject to.
So it would be subject to either, you know, checking into?
Well, he, I'm sorry. You'd have to get a demolition permit, so that, to remove those two structure, because right now, you pay taxes on those, and once you issue the demolition permit, the county will find out that you don't have, the state will find out that you don't have those two structures, so then I can charge you taxes for that.
Okay.
And then when your new structure is built, then you'll be paying, you know, taxes on that. So, yeah, the first thing is to get a demolition permit for those two structures.
Before I take them down?
Before you take them down.
And see?
We'll see, I'll see.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then I'd say it's scaled site plan, just a document, which, again, it's a large property, it doesn't look like it's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I actually took the plans that I, this was from the state when the property was purchased, so I actually took this and just eliminated the two buildings and put it, put where I wanted to put it, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, I figured that's, because there are, all the setbacks are on there, we just measured from here to where the building is gonna be from here to here, and here to here, and all the numbers were on what I turned in, I hope, they're correct.
That's good. Yeah, so the building department can confirm that? I'd, I'd say he, uh, he's addressing all the issues.
Okay.
We could get his wife in here and thank her.
She, she wanted to come, but her grain kids were a little bit more important than this.
I'd say so.
Mr. Francis, you have any? I have no comments.
You stated this is for storing your vehicles?
My classic cars, yes.
How many are we talking about?
Uh, six and a boat, and a motorcycle, which should be more, hopefully more than enough.
Okay, I'm just gonna have to check, um, just the, uh, P A code, just to make sure, indoor vehicle, um, storage and suppression.
Okay.
And I'll look that up, and we can get back to you.
Thank you. I think the code is five thousand square feet, if you're over five thousand square feet, you would require a sprinkler system, but if you're less than five thousand square feet, you, you're not gonna require a sprinkler system.
Whatever I gotta do.
Any questions?
So where am I at? I don't know.
So it sounds like we could, we could approve a contingent, uh...
Building removals?
Yeah, the building removals, um, the planning commission would have to, uh, agree that you can, according to eleven sixty-three oh two I, that you can have a structure larger than six hundred square feet, correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, that you provide, the building department's showing that you're, you have less than ten percent coverage on the.
Okay.
Can, we, we think we ought to have an administrative review, because the fire chief says you have to look at something, and you have to take down buildings too, so, subject to administrative approval, instead of approving it all right now.
I, I think you're right, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you make that, you're good at that.
Okay, make it, make a motion to approve, um, with a few bullet items here, Susan?
Yeah.
Plan commission, uh, approves, according to section eleven sixty-three point oh two I, that you can have a structure larger than six hundred square feet. Uh, that he removes the two existing outbuildings. He provides, uh, documentation showing that he has less than ten percent lot coverage. And, uh, confirmation from fire department about fire suppression.
That would be the max I'm putting in, so, minimum of four right now, so.
Okay. I mean, at, at the least, I'd like to see a fire extinguisher.
Uh, hang on a second.
I'll second.
All right.
Next.
There's an actual motion, and I do believe I heard you let the record reflect that the applicant stated that all the, um, property maintenance violations will also be cured in connection with this matter.
Okay, did hear that.
Yeah, I'm working. Would've been more, but I was on vacation, so.
All right, so we've got a motion, second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. So, all right, stay here, or?
I'll eat, don't.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to hang out.
I like that.
Uh, next is a generator installation for Greenberg at eighty-two eleven Bavaria Road.
I feel like we brought more horsepower than we needed.
Better than being on there.
Yeah.
Uh, like to just give us a quick explanation of what you're, what you're planning.
Let me see, that's how you're more than representing the fire engineer record I'm trying. Basically, we are working with Granger to provide standby power to the facility, so in the case of a power outage, basically, the generators will turn off, provide standby power, so that they can operate during an outage situation. Um, this is in addition to the dedicated fire pump generator, we're not touching that generator, that system is in place, and it's gonna remain that, so.
Okay, pretty, pretty basic, but it sounded, it's probably, it's pretty complicated to actually put in a code. Uh, Mr. Francis, would you like to go over your thoughts?
Sure, yeah, my report dated July eleventh, and I would concur, Mr. Chairman, very straightforward, the western side of the building will receive a generator, kind of in the truck parking area, the eastern side, um, will receive a generator, and it, it's gonna be in an area that's kind of doesn't need its off-street parking, but it's not being used as off-street parking. I went back and looked at aerials back to twenty fifteen, I think, and it's not being used, so, I see no issue with impact to parking, and, uh, overall, it meets the setback, so, um, unless the city engineer and fire department have, um, any issues with the request, I think it can be approved as submitted.
Excellent. I have one, Chairman, fire department?
You go.
Monaco?
But the only question that I had is, is about the number of parking spaces that you have there, and I just wanna make sure that you weren't granted a, a variance, that you had less parking space than you required, so, did you?
No, there's plenty of parking, uh, in the front of the building.
Okay.
It's, it's actually rather empty, we probably should lease it out to somebody, you know, we want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he needs to park his cars, and we'll see, we'll see what we can do with that.
Those are any questions from the commission?
No, they're pretty clear.
All right, Chris, you're good. All right, anyone want to make a motion? You gave it over.
I'll make a motion to be approved, the, uh, generator additions to eighty-two eleven Bavaria Road, as submitted.
I'd second that.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Could I please get your guys' names, because this is our foundation?
Yeah. I'm Jimmy Beamon, B E A M O N, I'm, uh, the construction project manager with Granger.
Okay, oh, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, proposed song for appropriate, yeah, eight fifty, Bavaria Road. So another one that's probably pretty straightforward, you guys will put a new sign up.
No, all the old signs, my dad put it in.
Yeah.
Forty, fifty years ago.
Oh, wow.
Forty-five years.
Got your money's worth?
I transferred ownership, and I decided to put a nice line up.
Hmm.
So we're happy to be here, so, yeah, we're not going anywhere.
Good. Mr. Francis, would you like to go over your thoughts?
Sure, uh, my report dated July twelfth, so the applicant is, um, looking to replace that existing ground sign with a new one. Section eleven seventy-nine oh seven B and C permits one identification sign, maximum forty square feet. The proposal is to, um, install just under twenty-four square feet of ground sign, a little over five feet tall, a little more than twenty feet from the street, so no issue insofar as the numerical standards of the code. The sign itself is a non-illuminated alumina, non-illuminated aluminum cabinet attached to aluminum base. I just point out, the planning commission has required, um, other applicants to erect ground signs using, um, more of a decorative brick surround, um, and utilize dimensional lettering as opposed to plastic tack cabinets. Um, and in addition, the planning commission has, um, reported landscaping around the base of the ground sign pursuant to the code. Uh, so just something I think that the commission should, um, talk to the applicant about, and consider upgrading the signage, consistent with, um, the approvals recently for other ground signs.
All right, thank you. It's my, yeah, but, got it?
No comments.
All right. All right, commission?
Straightforward, uh, can you spruce it up a little bit? That's what, what I think they're asking.
Well, I want to address one that, uh, no more, I don't know. I'm, uh, marking down some grounds. And I know that situation, we've done some signs here before, including that car wash car, and it was, it was a, a brick base. This tends to be, in my opinion, a little bit of an industrial area. Uh, as you can see, some of the signs that are up along there, uh, having a aluminum skirt, yes, it's not brick, adding brick or basery does add quite a, a cost to it, and save a dimension to, uh, an area that, as you can see, most of the sites in that, uh, neighborhood, which are, actually, these are all taken, right, and the property are flat. You've got two post-up panels there, you've got a base of one right next door, you can see the address on that, that does not have the, uh, uh, basery brick stone base.
And I, well, I agree, there, there are a bunch of signs that do not match that, but a lot of them have been there for quite a while.
So a lot of them.
Yeah, exactly, you know, and it takes quite a, um, you know, we weren't necessarily pushing for that back then, I don't know, and we didn't, so those were put up, but, but anything newer in that area, um, it's fifteen, twenty years probably, um, yeah, so you're, it's kind of, so ours, I know there's an electronic message sign, but they've got, you know, a brick, a brick, uh, block thing, um, just down the road was the bug place, uh, you know, we recently had them, uh, put in the same kind of sign, yeah.
They're a lot of them.
T and T, uh...
They're from one from down.
Yeah, it's, it's really, that's what we've been pushing for even farther out, uh...
One other thing, Kevin.
Yes.
When, uh, you know, we approved yours just the way it is, when the next one comes up, one of these older signs, and we try to upgrade them, and say, well, just last year you approved them for this wooden sign, and, uh, so we never... So, we never be able to upgrade, they use yours as, as prime example, you know what I mean, you'd be the latest one, so, uh, that's why we're trying to upgrade as we go along. When these other companies come up, the ones you're showing us, we do the same thing with them, try to push them into upgrading a little, even though it's a little more expensive.
Did you guys not bring another option in for us? I mean, if we can look at, if we were to do something like that, I'd go maybe a full brick, it's allowed, because otherwise we're doing brick, we're going to put on a footer, which means a footer inspection. Getting a masonry to do that. And that's just the, you know, the aspect of putting the, you know, the brick aspect. We were talking about that in a dimension, so it's like, we have a one right there, you know, these are flat panels.
Well, again, those are older signs that we've been for a long time, that they come in, and if they'd like to upgrade their signage, we're going to ask them to do the same thing. It just hasn't happened, happened, they haven't come in, for that kind of thing, we're not out there chasing them down and asking them to do it, but if they are coming, or, or, they haven't, they haven't done so many signs, uh, just like that. Mr. Francis, I don't know what you think about full brick thing, I know we've tried to avoid it as much as possible.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's certainly better than the aluminum panel, and I get it, it's, um, expensive to do all brick, um, block is less, but gee, still, you're going to have to have a footer and an inspection. Um, and I think it's, it's definitely better than the aluminum, you know, having the quick brick or whatever you want to call it, thin brick.
Yeah.
There's another one, industrial public, maybe just recently, and, uh, have some, some.
I mean, yeah, you can do something that's down the road, that's on a partial ground, I mean, is that what you guys want, is, uh, there's one on eighty-two, which is basically is covering the post.
What, I'm not really, what sign are you talking about?
There's one, I mean, heading down eighty-two, or before you turn into Valley View, there's one on the left. It's a medical building, small, it just had basically a square of masonry. It's basically, it's a, the concept, if we were to do something like that, we're going to have to work around. When we did the car wash over there, that was fifteen thousand dollars, just put in brick. And you had to put a base in there, brick, it was much bigger. Putting any kind of, you're asking, you know, smaller companies to put in a brick base. Like, I don't know how to do it, put a little cap on there, or, you know, a poster there, still, still have to do a footer, and I have to, have to inspect her out.
Yeah, I have no problem with inspections.
Yeah, the inspection, I don't.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with inspections.
Uh, what, what do we ask Koblenz to do, that, he was recently there, isn't he putting in a, a new sign for the front of his new building on Highland there, I think, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't recall what.
I think it's a monument sign, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a monument sign, I don't recall, I know it had brick or block incorporated into it, I just don't remember.
I don't know if that's cheaper or not.
Oh. Reddenall. Yeah, I don't remember that, how that, with the fields of background, how it's filled, and when that came through.
That's what I was thinking there?
Yes, I, I, mind to see which one you're referring to.
The front of the building is, uh, masonry, correct? Should have front office for it.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. Correct. I think, we're not, I think a hundred percent opposed to, to a full brick, I know we have used it a couple of spots. Or about someone's using it a couple of spots.
I don't have a problem with it, just given the fact it's on a sign, if we're on a building, we'd be out of a problem, because I think that tends to show a lot more of its face, if, you know, a lot of the weakness to it, unless you have a base of a sign, I was concerned about it.
Like, I believe maybe it's, down here is the S T G electric one, might have been, that might be full brick, down on that one, there was something now close.
I think that other one, you showed closer, it's going to, it shows like a full stone.
Um, but if it can be done, done well, I think we'd be open to that. Um, but we'd be looking for something with a substantial base like that, um, that Mr. Francis described, with some kind of landscaping around it.
There's already something in place, all that you're probably asking for is, if we're able to something around there.
I don't know, Mr. Francis, do you have any suggestions on, sort of, level of, uh, landscaping?
Tip, typically, it's just low lying shrubs, flowers.
Something that.
Yeah. Yeah, you, I mean, you can just hand draw up some kind of a little sketch, I mean, typically, the plan commission approves that adminis, allows for an administrative approval, and the building department will either approve it or will send it over to me, but, um, the idea is just to green up the base, and. Yep, you obviously don't want to put big, tall bushes and cover your sign, that seems to be.
You're going to keep these, like, that's there, is that what you're, that's what you're?
Yes, I, I suggest to you this, uh, August meeting, and bring back some of the proposals. Plus, Mr. Francis, Collins.
You'd be able to forward that.
Yeah.
Hey, my recommendation, if it didn't match, it's a little, like, a little complicated, and a color, and such, so it's going to be, tied together.
Susan, I'll make that motion to you this, to the August meeting, to address Mr. Francis's comments.
All right. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to, things need to be due, in what drawings?
That's probably pretty quick.
From August until this Friday.
This Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Need a full submission. Is the, uh, drawings or actual stuff there?
What do you mean, a full submission?
You want a new, I said, full plans.
It's continued, so I'll need three hard copies and one digital copy, so, thank you.
By this morning?
Yeah, for August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Matt.
Take care. No worries.
Uh, next, often is, uh, Cleveland Car Wash, uh, proposed signage. I'm going to have to, uh, recuse myself from this one, and say, I just worked with, uh, with these guys, so, I'm going to somewhat turn it over to Mr. Walters.
Bear town.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, can you just state your name for, for the record?
Yes.
Joe Bertucci, B E D O Y, T U C C I. Thank you. Uh, you want to give us a overview, you were here, you're, someone's here for the last month for us, uh, and then just give a couple of updates, and then, Mr. Francis, do you have a few comments?
Sure. Apologies, I'm on vacation, I mean, scheduled to resign, uh, I'm not going to be here. And also, I'm just going to start off by saying apologies to City of Massachia, you know, and the staff. Uh, we have a lot of locations, building, various, various buildings, car washes, um, jobs, I'm trying to open sixteen here in Cleveland, it's not new to us. So, without our mistake, to assume that the changes we were making were, uh, maintenance, uh, and improvements to, uh, existing, so. Completely apologize, especially, uh, you know, I know the patients, right, you know, right before all this happened, I feel absolutely terrible, and I can't apologize enough, we like to come into communities, um, starting on the right foot. Uh, we think we make properties better, we think we have one of the best looking properties anywhere in the country, take pride in that. Uh, we want to become part of the community through donations to the nonprofits in the community, and so, really, to get off on the wrong foot with the city is not what we're interested in, so, I can't apologize enough, but I'm not wasting, wasting time, but I care really about getting off with my tail between my legs. And saying, this is not how we typically do business, we made a long assumption, and I can take the blame for that personally, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, we're here for the signage approvals, um, entered around the site, uh, some of the signs were, were existing, we upgraded the whole to more commercial industrial strength, um, and some are new to the property. We can cover, first, the building signage, in short, the building signage will remain similar to what is there, as far as the channel letters, um, in the same location, same size, uh, it's underneath the, the size for the ornaments. Uh, really just making it our brand, uh, in those existing locations, and monument sign will remain exactly the same, with final panel just being replaced with our brand. As far as the signs located on the site, I'd say we have, as identified in the comments, we have a couple do not enter signs, which are safety and instructional in manner. Uh, one for a bailout lane, so you don't enter it from the vacuum lot, going in the opposite direction, customers entering and watching. We also have one at the tunnel exit end, uh, because of the way the site is situated, when you enter, you could make a left, assuming that's the tunnel entrance, and it's not, so, it's a fair customer speed from that. There is another sign along our stack lane, which is instructional nature, that the customers take your foot off the brake, and, and it's, um, a lot of wording on it, but it is, when you're sitting in the stack, it's instructional nature, make sure it's safe, and they know how to operate, um, through the process of things across the line. Couple signs at the kiosk, and a sign at the tunnel entrance, uh, on the building, which, again, reiterate, so please, take your foot off the brake, hands off the wheel, uh, just redundant in nature, uh, because of the safety issues you have on express. Um, added landscaping, throughout, added a irrigation system, which provides a great amount of zones, and so, we do, we do make the property look better, um, and we do want it to maintain its, its love, so that's why we have the irrigation system. We have removed all of the marketing signs, uh, today, to ensure that, and hopefully some force, so I mean, feather signs, yard sign, those are all being removed, and will not be placed on the property unless operations must have sought for variance in the signs before, in short term, for sure. Uh, the one piece is the booth, uh, which is all comments, um, obviously, the booth, we, we can remove the signage for the booth, I don't have a new booth, because ours has the A, the A C exterior to the booth, um, we have to build another one that maybe provides that. We switch to that because of, especially the north and midwest, where we operate the climates, right, we, we, we're out there, Monday through, seven days a week, Monday through Saturday, seven AM to eight PM, Sunday, eight AM to eight PM, whether it rains snow, sleet or hail, our employees are out there. And so, we've, we've recently added booths, and we're trying to gradually actively add booths in existing locations to allow our, our team members to be able to service the customer anytime in the whole life. So, if you remember, there's no interaction, you pull up the gate, over and see, if you're, so if I'm a current member or not a member yet, you pull into the left lane, and we have an employee who always should interact with that customer, they will operate the kiosk, one, it makes it more efficient, and two, you can guide through the process of either buying membership or not. And so, the booth provides air conditioning, you can sit out of heat, out of the rain, out of the. We, we will, unless I'm told at this meeting that a booth is absolute, will never be approved. I will go back and figure out if there's a provider that has the air conditioning here inside, I'm not sure, you want the drip, we can look into that, we would like to have the booth to provide that for our employees, obviously, we can operate without it, we have operated without it, we just feel it's better, and we're a retirement for our employees. The sign, uh, the sign is sheets, the three sheets that were submitted, I know can be somewhat confusing, but the, the purpose of this was to categorize them and bunch them into categories of specific signs. So, the best example would be section one, which is the first two rows of signs, we're not proposing to install all those signs, those are just signs that are typically interchanged in what we call a link master, which is the signs on the building facing the back line, so there are three of those that face the back line, um, that are affixed onto the building. What this section proposes is the interchangeable, they're all the same size, uh, at different times they promote either sponsors, um, that we have, Guardians of the Browns, uh, whether it's the community, nonprofit that we sponsor through our tile program, which is a hundred percent of the time, that money goes to the charity, so we never take, anytime you sell a tile, that money, one hundred percent of the time, it's not a promotion, that goes to the nonprofit we're sponsoring at the time. And then, throughout the year, we sell air fresheners, and those proceeds go to nonprofits, so we, we advertise that for our customers, to make them aware about the rest of Presalt's plans, or whether it is advertising, what, what the wash does, what the benefits of the express tunnel are, or the pricing. I think I'll leave that for any questions, I think I've covered that, because I know it was very familiar with the site, um, I won't, I don't want any questions.
Let me just, uh, you're not adding a booth to, to your application, you were just talking about signs on a booth, is that what you're talking about?
Well, to be clear, it was on.
I'm confused on that.
It was on the application, I'm just addressing the comments that said it was inappropriate.
The booth?
Yes.
Oh.
And based on the materials and signage and the exterior, uh, A C unit. So, I, and, you know, the materials, you know, it's aluminum material, probably similar to, like, window frames, of, you know, it's pretty consistent, the signage, I know, can be removed, so the signage, uh, we can take that off of it, the A C unit, I'm just not well person enough in our booth, quite honestly, to speak for that, um, if there's a solution, we can look into it.
That's fine, okay, thank you.
But it is on the link, so.
All right.
Mr. Francis, do you want to go through your comments?
Sure, I can, um, I know your, your application was signed by Jared Norton, and it looks like Jared Norton is with Morrison Signs, sorry, I didn't catch your, your name?
Joe Bertucci.
Joe Bertucci. Um, Joe, is that okay if I call you Joe? Yeah, Joe, what's your role with the application or the company?
I'm, I'm with the ownership, I'm the VP of Development with Express Wash Concepts, Express Wash Concepts, which is the parent company of the Express Auto Wash, and Jared is our sign vendor who we contract with on all of our sets.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, it looks like there was an approval for wall signage, and, um, at some point, a bunch of additional signage went up, we're here tonight to talk about that, and then, this booth, I didn't realize, is this booth already constructed?
It is not there now.
It's not there now?
Regular kiosk that was there before, we, we had, again, the whole process is convoluted, so apologies, it was installed, thinking that that was a replacement for the kiosk, not realizing we needed a permit for that, we took it away, and a kiosk exists today in our.
Okay, and one of the things that, um, I did not, uh, note in my report, and I just want to go back and, and supplement that now, just missed it, is the existing cabinet sign, um, just as you heard with the last application, um, you know, it's the desire of the commission to eliminate these plastic cabinet signs and upgrade those, so I think that's a conversation that needs to occur tonight as well, about the architecture of that, of that cabinet sign. But, um, for a moment, if we can just go talk about, from my report dated July twelfth, talk about the additional signage, and if I'm reading it correctly, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, there, you're proposing thirteen additional signs? Looks like there's, uh, four number one signs. Looks like there's, uh, four number one signs, which if I, I'm not sure what number one is, it looks like it's this insert on this page, uh, four, which, number one is this insert on this page. Those that are being proposed?
Three on the building, and one at the tunnel exit, which faces, it's eight feet from the tunnel, face of the tunnel, yes.
Okay, so...
You can't see it anywhere except exiting the tunnel.
The one in the tunnel?
Correct. It's under our wash, our dry go sign, which lets customers know when they can...
And there's signage already existing on the tunnel now?
Yes.
Okay, so these are four additional wall signs being proposed?
The one at the tunnel exit was an upgrade from a, I think it was damaged, don't quote me on that, but it was a similar dry go sign, uh, that was much taller and linear in height, but that was replaced with our, um, dry go sign, which lets you know if you stop, you know, don't hit the gas yet until you're off the conveyor.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what's under that sign is, is what we call Wingmaster, is this sign. So it's all one unit. There was an, that was an, that replaced an existing, I guess was internally eliminated with, I don't know what it was, that was L E D this year, but maybe, but it was an internally eliminated sign at the tunnel exit, which did the same thing. It told customers when they could hit the gas, take it out of the...
Okay. And it, it contained a logo, the previous one?
Yeah.
It was just instructional in nature?
Sure, I picture is, uh, yeah, definitely instruct, definitely instructional nature.
Yeah.
I don't remember, Mr. Frans, I'll trust Nina if he remembers that.
Yeah, so, so the reason I ask is instructional, doesn't contain, it's, you know, no logo, no sort of corporate identification. It's really by the code, it's a sign intended to instruct employees, customers or users as to a specific parking requirement, location, or specific services offered, methods of payments accepted, but can't contain, um, like a logo or identification, can't say Cleveland or Clean Express or anything like that. And that's a instructional sign, and those are limited to square footage. What's not clear to me is how big the instructional signage that you're proposing at item number one is, because are they all this twenty-eight by forty-four?
Correct.
Okay, so they are twenty-eight by forty-four, and there's four of those, three on the building, one on the top?
Yes, sir.
So that, obviously, you recognize will require a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals for that, because the code reads, all building elevations can have one wall sign. It's the way the code reads, basically. Set aside square footage area, you can have one per elevation, eligible elevation.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Just so I understand, very similar signs throughout Macedonia, and you see, and again, to be fair, most of them are in windows. So is the distinction that if we were to just reposition those three into the windows that are on that building, similar to the Wendy's, the Taco Bell, the O'Reilly's, the Auto Zone, and, um, I'd have a whole list that far, and it's not one, it's multiple signs, even next door to the Cosmo, Prof, I mean, there's four signs in their windows. So if those signs were to be taken out of those, we call them Wingmaster frames, and then placed into the windows, do they now become compliant?
Well, I don't know the answer to that question. So we have a regulation under eleven seventy-nine oh three, um, eleven seventy-nine oh three D, um, which allows for window signage, and that has specific regulations as to the percentage of the glass area. And so yes, window signage is allowed. If you wanted to apply for window signage, it's possible that you could get it. Those ones you're speaking to, I don't know if they have approval, they could just be enforcement issues, they could be active or new enforcement issues, I just don't know the answer to that. It's easy to look around town and see examples of things that might be similar, but knowing the status of those examples is a whole different issue. Okay, so, come in. We have these four number ones, and it looks like a number, one number three, uh, which number three appears to be aluminum neutral braking steering, twelve inch by thirty-six inch. Yeah, um, so that's an instructional sign, provided it doesn't have Clean Express and Wash on it. That would be an instructional sign, less than four square feet, and can be approved by the planning commission. And it looks like you have two number four signs, which are just simply, please do not enter, four square feet. And that's definitely an instructional sign, approvable by the planning commission. Then you have one number six, which is an exit sign, pointing to vacuums, four square feet, and again, that would be an identification sign. And then, that's one of those, and then one number eleven, um, which is a little over two square feet, has QR code with your symbol and your name and such on there. So again, can't contain those things, so if it didn't, and it was just instructional in nature, that's acceptable, the planning commission can approve it. Then you have two number twelve signs, which is definitely for sure signage by the code, so it'd be a wall sign. Generally, it's, uh, extremely signed. I mean, there's instructional signage, which is important and pertinent to the site, I just generally think it's way over signed. Now, I think, so with that said, the commission really can't approve a lot of this tonight, because, you know, it just, a lot of it contains...
Sure.
What's deemed to be a sign, and then there's too many on each building elevation, which are limited to one. But what they could approve is yours, you know, the... And that would require planning commission approval, so. And upon resubmission, you could certainly include that in. Just same thing, have the sign vendor would provide the, you know, the area of the window, and then the size of the sign, and what it looks like.
What you guys got?
Yeah, we only have the sprinkler zones, and then the landscaping, Mr. Frans, about all.
Yeah, there's the monument, and there's that. Whatever. Yeah, and determine what's, and determine what's, you know, absolutely necessary, can logos come off and such to meet the instructional requirements of the code. So that, that's something the applicant's already said that he's going to do. You could approve the...
This cabinet sits on a brick base, is... The landscaping, then it's just overtaking that, because it's not visible, but we, in like here, so the side of the supplemental package really should have shown that better. It should have shown that it's set on the existing basic building, we're seeing right here is this, and that's all that we have.